All right, I see that it's 5:30 PM here on Monday, March 6, 2023. I'd like to call the order tonight's Special Board of Education meeting here at the Merrill High School Auditorium. Could I have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Lynda Yingling.
Here.
Paul Groth.
Here.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kendra Osnus.
Here.
Jaclyn Gremler.
Here.
Maria Holpe.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Mr. President, I would ask that this meeting be changed from a compensated meeting to a non-compensated meeting for the board. Is that a motion? That is a motion. A motion, Paul, and second by Ron. Do we have any discussion on a motion to make this a non-compensated meeting this evening? Any discussion or questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Before we get started on the agenda, I just got a couple things I want to go through. First of all, thanking all of you for attending tonight's meeting. I guess I had a couple of quick comments or clarifications before we open our agenda discussion. These items are in no particular order and are reminders for the good of the order, not being directed to any specific board member or members. In fact, some of these are clarifications of things I have reviewed and learned personally over the last few weeks. As an example, tonight's meeting, a topic was called upon via the written or formal request of a board member per our bylaw or policy 0162 or 64.2. Keeping in mind when that request is made, it requires some time for calendar review, followed by the proper notice and provisions as required by state law or state statute. So on a side note there, just for housekeeping purposes, around the time of each monthly board meeting, Tammy provides us either an email or a calendar requesting updates for any conflicts that we may have the next month. So in the past, if no calendar or email request was responded to, it was determined that we felt that you were available without any conflicts for that that next month. Please, instead of us guessing or coming to that conclusion, if everyone could update Tammy each month accordingly, that would really help the process. Even if the response is that you're available at this time for every day, we realize sometimes life happens and plans need to be changed, so then just update Tammy along the way. On a side note, as far as that goes, when people are not able to make committees, you've done an excellent job of getting substitutes and notifying people up front, so, you know, thank you for that and keep up the good work there. With the timing of tonight's meeting, a couple additional things come to mind. Sometimes, not knowing the amount of community or staff attendees, we make a decision to schedule the meeting here at the high school auditorium. We do our best to make sure everyone can see and hear, but sometimes the layout is not perfect or something goes wrong. We do work to improve that plan and this layout every time. So now tonight, this looks a little bit more like the boardroom. In the past, when we first started at the auditorium, it was the beginning of the pandemic, so we also spread it out more because of a six feet in between board members. So we keep working to do that, so everyone can participate in here. There's been another topic or question that also warrants a quick refresh here. I've heard on a couple occasions, why is this person able to attend the meeting via video conference versus being in person? The guidance the board provided since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic was that the desire was to be 100% face-to-face versus allowing a board member to attend via video conference. So that was motioned and approved. The only exceptions are in regards to administration and other non-voting members of the public. These people are invited to enhance our meetings and may be needed only for a short period of time or a quick presentation, and also, in some cases, may be health and safety-related. Please note, in emergency situations, policy 0189 will be invoked, as was the case for some virtual board meetings at the start of the COVID-19 process, April and May of 2020. I'm almost finished, so bear with me just a little longer. I do ask on your own time and for all of our good, I'm asking board members to please reread policy 0144.5, 0144.5, titled "Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct." I certainly understand we're all adults and professionals, so it's just a reminder that when topics are being discussed, we are addressing an agenda topic and not a stance by a fellow board member or administrator. We normally do a great job of this, but when we start having to make more difficult decisions and have healthy debate, sometimes it seems to take a turn and get somewhat personal. So thank you in advance for reviewing this and adhering to this policy. Finally, before I turn it over to Dr. Kelly Strike for a summary and recap of the budget reduction, agenda topic, and any updates since our last meeting, I want to address a Robert's Rules housekeeping item. In the past, I've been using the small group guidance on the matter of board members calling the question for a vote. I have checked and clarified that in proper Robert's Rules guidelines, the following needs to take place to call a question or a similar worded motion. First, a board member must be called on and have the floor before making said motion. The motion to call the question needs to have a second, there is no discussion, and a two-thirds majority is needed to approve the motion, and then if approved, we move to vote on that original motion. I've normally been flexible and tried to do my best to make sure all board members have had a chance to speak. In case of highly debated topics, I will look to the board to follow this guidance or procedure. Thank you in advance for understanding and following along. Anyone have any questions on my opening statement? Otherwise, at this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Dr. Kelly Strike for a summary or recap of this topic and what has got us here through the Finance, Human Resources Committee meeting, as well as our last board meeting. So Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you. So to bring us up to speed, I think it was this fall, November, or maybe the December meeting, and I was preparing this fall a budget projection. And I talked about a number of things with assumptions, both in revenue and expenses. And at that time, very conservative approach, which I think any business manager would at that time, looking at a deficit of potentially $5 million. However, also knowing, that I've shared all along, that we estimate about $1 million left in ESSER, thus having about a $4 million deficit. And at that time, you actually made change in policy just to have the option for deficit spending or a deficit budget if needed. That was entered and has been discussed at a number of weather committee and regular board meeting, thinking that that might be a one-year option for us to consider pending another referendum. I can tell you, though, we are now in March, right? So there's a few things that are known, and one thing I can tell you is that last month, you approved, the reductions you approved totaled just over $2.4 million. So if you say, Kelly, $4 million, $2.4, what's the difference? Yes, there still could be a potential gap of 1.6. But I think, again, there's a lot of assumptions, but there are a few things that I do know now. One is, in March, I can tell you that our expense to budget, as those of you, especially at HR Finance, know that we are running, our expenses are running below budget, in a good way, not that we have a huge gap, but that there is some room, if you will, between expense and forecasted budget. That being said, keep in mind, in a school district, we can't just say, ooh, we're going to earmark that money for next year, but what we can do is take expenses we had planned on using in ESSER, move to district because we want to spend our budget out. Remember, we want to spend our budget out because that impacts shared cost, which impacts our aid. So if you don't spend out your general budget, and again, ESSER and some of those other things are not part of those shared costs, that could impact our aid. So we have the potential to have maybe more than $1 million in ESSER for next year. And it's a very different picture in November than it is in March, a lot more expenses have gone in. Also, keep in mind, I did not build that budget, and there's a lot of transition, and so a little more time in looking into that, feeling comfortable that we're on par, and we are. Some of our benefits have come back with a 0% increase. We are still waiting on health, that's the big one, but all indications would indicate that we're going to have a very good renewal rate again. Last year, keep in mind, it was actually not zero, it was actually a slight reduction. That being said, some forecasted expenses could be less. Therefore, I don't think it's that 1.6 as much as I'd like to say maybe we can reduce that in half with that information I have. As I shared at our meeting last month, there are a lot of unknowns with the biannual budget, but a lot of indications would indicate that there could be some additional dollars coming our way, whether it be through increased special ed aid, per pupil categorical aid, I kind of explained all those different scenarios. So that being said, is it possible that we would even be able to have, without any additional cuts and just doing that referendum, we might be able to have a balanced budget? I think it's possible. I think 1.6, although I think was a conservative estimate back in the fall, we have information today knowing it's a little bit less. Hence the reason, last month, when we said to kind of end after that line 11, that we have some time. That being said, as we have said all along, we will continue to look at any potential reductions, things that come up, and being that it's March, we have some time here to make some additional decisions if we need to. I do want to clarify deficit budget versus deficit spending. If we would have a deficit budget, and by that, that means expenses that are greater than revenues, having a deficit budget does not guarantee deficit spending. We could come with a deficit budget of a half a million dollars, for example. We could watch spending really closely throughout the year, and you might not end up deficit spending. So I want to make that clear, too, that if we end up in a deficit budget situation, it might not be deficit spending. And I know you're faced with very difficult decisions that I think we all have been thinking about, but keep in mind that I said about $1 million of that, close to $1 million of our reduction in aid and revenue, is a result of declining enrollment. So as much as we want to keep all programs, all people, and we would love to do that, too, some reductions are necessary because of that. And I think we tried to indicate that we had made some choices at MAPS to add some positions with the ESSER funding, in hopes that they would be analyzed, and maybe with a passing referendum, we would be able to keep all those additions. So some of those, that's why we kind of separated those areas, are maybe necessary given our current situation. The other thing I want to keep in mind is that as we go through this, and I appreciate everyone wanting to think about all the positions or program that may be caught, but we have to consider our operational needs and costs. And keep in mind that we trimmed over $400,000 in our maintenance budget. Can we do that forever? I'm not sure, right? In our CNI budget, we have really taken not a lot of money in terms of resource, materials, adoption, things like that. So those are things that even if we get some great news with the budget, and I'm very hopeful that schools get that this year, we're going to have to balance not only everything on this list, but other operational costs and decision-making. And the other thing I would just indicate that I think, as much as we'd like to save all programs and positions, we need to think about that operational expense and our, keep in mind, 65% of our budget is our staff, salary and fringe of our staff, and we want to have MAPS be a place where we can recruit and retain staff. And so as much as the idea of some things such as pay freezes and things like that, we have to also weigh out and consider that we have an 8% CPI. We are, we're kind of falling behind the curb on some of our neighbors in terms of pay, so we have to kind of stay current with those, especially in a teacher shortage era in regard to some of our decisions moving forward. So some of that might be a little bit of a recap and maybe some of my interjection of some of my thinking, but just wanted to share that as we enter into conversation
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I guess I would open the floor. Our topic this evening, as was alluded, is the budget reduction updates for 2023 to 2024 school year. I guess in the, looking at the reductions and how this was all approached in the last few meetings, I guess I would open the floor for new discussions or thoughts on any reflection or things that have not been shared, on anything that you've just heard either tonight for the first time from Dr. Strike or things for the good of the order. Keeping in mind, we do have a couple upcoming meetings, we do have Finance, Human Resources on Wednesday evening, and a week from Wednesday, we do have the next regular board meeting, all keeping things in line for the end of the month, preliminary non-renewal state statute deadline as far as staffing is concerned. So with that said, I will open the floor for anyone that would like to speak on tonight's Maria, go ahead.
I'll just ask one, just kind of simple question. Do we have any updates on retirements versus, I know when we had talked before, we talked about maybe we wouldn't have to lose as many people, and so do we have any more retirements or an update on that?
I mean, I want to speak, but I put that up.
Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
I believe it's one retirement, one resignation.
Okay.
Since our last meeting, but I can double-check that right now.
And then I think we said two, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I could have this number wrong, with the retirements that we had at the time and resignations that we had at the time, it boiled down to three positions that would actually be cut people? Is that right, Dr. Strike? I can't remember.
Nope, it's a little bit more, and I do think my notes are correct, that we have one additional retirement, one additional resignation. And I had a conversation today with another one that indicated I would be receiving it soon. So it's kind of like it's a constant fluctuation.
Sure, sure.
At the time, I would say, as of right now, based on the conversation I had today, assuming that is coming through, we have the potential for five support staff and six teachers with what you've done so far. That's the potential.
So 11 total?
I'm sorry, seven teachers.
Seven teachers.
Seven teachers, five support staff, as it stands, again, kind of with the conversations that I had today.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's what we're eliminating?
Kelly, just to clarify, is that the number eliminating or the number that was retiring or resigning?
So that's looking at the elimination, and I'm going with what you approved last month, correct? Based on that, it's more than that, but because of retirements, resignations, some would be through attrition, if that makes sense, that would be the number of people impacted today, although the number of positions cut is greater.
Right, so 12 people impacted.
Potentially, right now, yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions or follow-up?
I guess I got one.
Go ahead, Chad.
How long, um, did you guys work on this budget as a group?
The reductions or the...
Or just, yeah, the reductions.
Reductions, okay, sorry, that's, I was like, I, okay.
A month or two or...
I would say since December, really, I think, right, Shannon?
Yeah, shortly after, shortly after the referendum failed, we took a little reprieve, and then we got after it by approaching and sitting down and talking to department chairs, building principals, and started kind of creating that list this way. So I would say between roughly the end of November till it was presented at HR Finance, a couple months.
Because the only reason, I mean, I, thanks for putting all the work in, I mean, but for us as a board, at least for me, oh, you guys had two months to figure it out, we had less than a week to look at it, and it would've been nice to just have a little more time. I mean, we're eventually the ones that make the decision and have to pay the paper, I guess, and we had a, like I said, I mean, by the time I had my question figured out and emailed to you and you got back to us, it was like three days before the meeting. I mean, to me, it wasn't, that's where it's kind of like the bombshell, and then I walked in and there was motions made.
I can address the timeframe, because Kevin and I talked about the process, and you know, we, we did a little more tight process this year than we've done in the past, haven't sat through a number of these for the last decade or so. So, but we wanted to make sure that the process, you know, was communicated, which I believe it was, and I think, you know, it went, it got to make people involved at the building level to have to make these decisions, and so the fact that we were up against some pretty tight timeframes, both, you know, on the non-renewal end, and then we're, you know, we didn't really fully understand our situation till after the November 8 referendum, and so that was really our window. And, I mean, there comes a point somewhere in this discussion where you got to hear it for the first time, and that's, you know, we did the work, we put together our cuts of recommendations based on what we believed to be the best interest and the least impact on kids, and I understand the fact that, yeah, you know, you saw it one day, and that's a big pill to swallow, but there's got to be that day, and so that is kind of the process. Maybe next year, we would add in a separate section for more board input, however that goes, Kevin and I talked a little bit about that today, but, I mean, that is the process that, and, you know, we're up against timeframes.
Well, I understand, I get that, but I mean, it's, I guess, I look at the Finance Committee part, I mean, there was, nobody saw it on the board level until that day, so we didn't have any time, and that's where your discussion's supposed to take place, really, on it, and we didn't have it, I mean, we were all looking at it first time, trying to put questions together, and like I said, you did a great job, we did the emails, get our questions answered, but, I mean, it still was, like I said, after that was three days to kind of comprehend what you told us back and try to get ready for the meeting, and under the assumption that we were going to have a discussion, and technically, you know, by rights, we really couldn't have a discussion after a motion was made. I mean, we could, but you had to, we had to do the friendly, whatever you called it, I forget how you said that.
Amendment.
Amendment or whatever, and I said, you know, it's tough to do that after somebody did, made their motion. But like I said, my thing was, big thing for this was always just get a little more board input, where you really didn't have much board input in this at all.
I think one thing I'd like to add is, and I think when we looked at the calendar, one thing we didn't consider was in the past, the HR Finance followed facilities, and we made that adjustment this year to have that stack with our CTP Committee back-to-back first, because more members could be there and how that worked, but that also moved it one week closer to the board meeting, so instead of having a two-week gap, part of making that decision, which was for the better of the process, we moved it to a one-week gap, and that was inadvertent, not thinking of this process. So in reflection, when you look at that calendar, that was a byproduct, and that was nobody's fault, we weren't thinking of the budget process at that moment, so just something else to mention, we did adjust that along the way. Chad, you still have the floor if you had other questions.
I'm glad that's all I had.
Okay. Jaclyn, then Kendra.
I'm, I'm happy we're having this meeting, and I think a word that hangs on for me is reflections. And over the last couple of weeks, since the meeting, I feel like I've spent a lot of time reflecting on the process, and I guess, me coming here today, I'm not coming from a stance of understanding the budget piece so much, because that's just not where my interest in this lies, but more of a process, and I felt like I was more impacted by the process than the actual budget reductions. After the meet, like during the meeting, before the meeting, after the meeting, I felt comfortable with the reductions that we made, I felt like I had some understanding, but not enough. And so for me, I just like to voice it, we can figure out a way to have a better process between these discussions. And as a newer board member, I feel like I struggle with the piece of a lot of questions and discussions need to be had pre-meetings, via reaching out through emails or things like that, and I sometimes don't even really know what questions to ask, but when we're having conversation, I have a lot of things that are sparked. So I feel like we miss out on some of that, and with this particular topic being as important and impactful as it is, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge behind some of these things to be able to be prepared to discuss them with people in the public or the meaning behind it. And I don't ever want to make a decision saying, well, someone better than me made it, and I just agreed with it, I want to make sure I'm having a sense of understanding of it. And I, too, felt like it's the time, and I get we were all under deadlines and things of that nature, but I do feel like moving forward, if we can figure out a better operational process on where to have those discussions and what it looks like. One of the things that I will point out that I did like through that process is Shannon compiled a list of our other board members' questions and then sent that out, and that really sparked a lot of things for me to be thinking about, but I also felt like then there wasn't time to kind of go through some of that more, so. So I don't know if we can look at our process as far as moving forward, how do we have those conversations, what does it look like, what's the best way? Because for me, I feel like I'm missing some of what's been laid out to have some of that prepared before the board meeting. And I get that that's a respect and a courtesy, and it's not like hard and set in stone where you can't, but it does leave me feeling like if I did have something that wasn't sent beforehand, like I'm unprepared, or I'm springing something on somebody, and that's never my intention, it's just sort of my nature in handling things. So if that's what I would be looking for tonight, is just those process pieces.
Sounds good, thank you, Jaclyn. Kendra?
So I was not in attendance at the meeting, but I watched it, and then I re-watched it today to just grasp a concept and prepare for tonight. And I do, just from my assessment and outside perspective, if that's okay for me to provide that right now, so I did feel like, it seemed like there was apparent that there were some board members that had additional questions or concerns and just didn't feel like everything, I don't want to use the word transparency, because I feel like everything was there, but it wasn't as clear maybe to others as it was other board members. I felt like Mr. Waller at, I think it was like, when Mr. Krieger had motion to amend somewhere within the agenda, F and H, to reverse those, I think at that moment, you had a great explanation of the history as to where, why, and I think sometimes that's very helpful to board members. So to Jaclyn's point about discussions and like the pay scale, I think it was a great addition to the meeting, because I think it really helped for everyone to understand, like when that was created and why it was the way it was, and why it was in the order that it was in. And I think Mr. Murray also had added to that. So I feel like what I'm hearing and seeing is, you know, kind of to Jaclyn's point, is like having a little bit more of that insight when we're making such a big decision is huge. I also think that there was a moment where things, where it was called a question, and you pointed out what the Robert's Rules lays out. I do think that also, though, at that moment, you did have a slight pause, and it allowed anyone else to have any further questions. So I did feel like there was a moment of opportunity that it didn't appear to me that there was other questions at that moment. And then I also just want to say that I thought that Mrs. Yingling had a great job at the end, just voicing that it was not, you know, distrust of what anyone's presenting, I think it's the fact that this is a very large impactful decision. I know that the hours that you guys put into this was immense, and what I just feel like I walked away from watching it and just having, hearing some feedback from community and, you know, potentially also with other board members, is just, just needing to, you know, more clarification and more just, not that we don't trust what is in front of us and what is on the cusp, but maybe just more understanding, because at the end of the day, we're the ones that are voting for it. And so, again, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't, you know, voice to that, but I just observed a few things from watching it, and those were kind of my high-level comments on it, so.
Kevin, can I address the timeframe, especially moving forward? So this year, we had kind of the, kind of a tough situation that, you know, we're talking three, four, or five million dollars, which is new for us. We're also talking about having to start that process in mid-November, which is challenging. And, you know, had a referendum passed, we'd be having a very different discussion right now, because, you know, that's just where we're at. But next year, we have the unfortunate task of doing this again, and we have to do next year in advance of either a February primary or April election date, if the board decides to go back to referendum. But we'll have some, some things that we won't have right now, we'll have a state budget that we know some answers to, that'll be very, very helpful. We will also be able to get in front of some of those reductions, because if we're wise, we would package that as part of our referendum pitch, if you will. And so certainly, I think we're a little wiser from this, you know, with tight timeframe or... or however that goes this year. And, and I think we can do things a little bit differently next year in advance with some, maybe some better information from the states and other things.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. I had Paul hand up next.
Thank you. I guess I would like to ask the question. Whose budget is this? Is this the school board's budget, or is it Shannon Murray's budget? Shannon Murray's budget, he's the man putting this budget together. How can we possibly come together once, one meeting a month or two meetings a month, understand everything that went into making that budget? I have 18 years on the NTC board. We have never gone into budget discussions of this nature. The president laid out the budget for us, this is what it's going to be. If there were layoffs made, she made them and gave the explanation why. Mr. Murray is doing the same thing. We're going to have to do layoffs, this is the reason why. We have no, no way to change this process. We can't make a budget. There's just no way nine people can sit down here without working 24 hours a day for about three years to come up with a budget. It's impossible. We don't go around the schools, we don't know what's going on. We don't know what needs to be fixed in the schools. We don't know where you can make cuts and still make the school run. 12 people losing their jobs, that's sad. I, my heart goes out to them, and I don't like the idea. But, it is what is happening right now. And it's not only happening in Maryland. You take a look at Wausau, what's happening down there, they're facing a similar problem as we are, and they're going to do a big thing in two years. I think it's $24 million budget, building increase. So, I think we need to put our faith in Shannon. Ask questions, that's great, but don't try to overthink your position. Don't try to overthink the budget. Let him design the budget, bring it to us, explain why it is. And if you've got questions at that point, that's fine. I don't go home and worry about what's going to happen with this budget. That's not my job, that, I don't feel that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to support Mr. Murray, I'm here to answer questions if I can, and continue on the operation of school under his tutelage. So, for what it's worth, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Paul. I've got Linda, followed by Maria.
Yeah. So, I guess I'm going to try and explain this, or come out the best way I can. The difference between NTC and the Maryland Area Public School System is that we're public, not private. We answer to our taxpayers. We answer to our staff members. We answer, and no offense, Mr. Murray, but in a way about, it is our budget, it's all of our budget. But, you know, and I know you guys did work very, very super hard on this, not saying that one bit. But, I have been in the buildings, I have seen what's going on. We have a lot of hard-working staff in those buildings. We got the voices from our administrators that, you know, know bits and pieces of some of those buildings and what goes on and where they may think those reductions could come from. However, I think maybe we should have included, yes, this is going to sound weird, but our staff members also know what they need or what we need. They're in those classrooms every single day with those kids, doing the hard work, you know. And so, deducting support staff or teachers, that's going to affect everybody in the long run. And most importantly, our kids are going to be affected as well. Excuse me. But, it's, it is hard making this decision, and I'm glad some of you guys have gone home and slept at night. I haven't. I think about this. I have, one, had one kid that has graduated from here. I still have one kid in the school district. But, I also have to realize, it's not just my kid here in the public schools, it's everybody's kids that we're taking care of. And their education is the most important thing. And I'm not sure, you know, if all of these things or suggestions were looked at, from some of the emails that we got and suggestions, you know. I don't see, you know, I see maybe one administrator on here. I don't see anything that has come out of the administration building. Are we, do we really need them, many people in that administration building? I don't know. You know, it used to be at one time, we had one human resource, one finance director, no secretaries. We only used, we didn't have, I don't want to say this without giving any names, but CPT, curriculum director. There was, where one position is one person, we didn't have them split up. And I know at the time when we made those position changes, it was because we had a little bit more things going on. But, if we're getting smaller, do we absolutely need those things in the bigger building or the head building? I don't know. And that's kind of the part where some of these things, you just don't know how they entwine with one another or affect each other. And that's what the struggle is, is that you hope to gosh for making the best decision for our kids. And that's why I'm glad we got to have this meeting, is because I want to make sure that we're doing the best part, best of our capabilities that we can do. And if we were unsure last month at our meeting, us board members could have said no. We could have went back at it again like we've done many times. You know, hit the ground running, put our heads in one bucket and go with it and work hard. But, I don't know, some of these things, I feel like we're failing our kids. I mean, there's a lot of important things on here, a lot of things that the kids need. And, yeah, I guess that's what I have, I mean, maybe we could have did something different, I don't know. But, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. President? Thank you, Linda. I've got Maria next.
I need to make one quick correction, just to clear it up. NTC is not a private college. It is a tax-funded technical school.
Okay, but you're not.
By the taxpayers of 10 counties. We answer to 10 counties for our business down there. So, we're, we're just like Maryland school, same thing.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Maria?
Just something I didn't think I was going to say is, I sort of agree with Paul, but not on everything. So, here, here's the difference that I see, having been on the NTC board myself. We're elected, and NTC board is appointed. And I think that's where I feel like it's a different skin in the game here. Because, you know, yes, we're answering on the NTC board to those 10 counties, but, you know, we're answering to our neighbors here that elected us. So, that's where I see the difference in that. But, I do agree, and I think you agreed with what a lot of people were saying, that we need to talk more if we have questions about the budget cuts. And I understand that it's Shannon and his doctor strike and its administration that puts this budget together, and they know it better than us. But, as an elected board member, I have to ask the questions. So, I respect what you're saying, but I think that we do need to ask the questions, because we have to be comfortable. We have to be comfortable when we're in the grocery store and somebody comes up and says, you know, my job was cut. It's different to me, NTC versus MAPS. And, and that's really, I'm glad we came together tonight, because I think we do need to be comfortable with these things and talk it through. And I don't think that's disrespectful to administration, I don't think that's disrespectful to anyone on the board. I think it was important to get together and talk it through. So, I'm glad that we're doing it and voicing concerns, because maybe something, a process needs to change, or many processes need to change in the future, to make sure that, you know, people are as comfortable as they can be with, with these really tough decisions. That is all.
All right. I've got a couple of things to add before I look to see if anyone else has questions or discussion. And this was just from what I'm hearing so far tonight. This is not at any one particular board member's comments, but we have modified the central office staff model a couple of times along the way. I don't know if it's perfect or not. Certainly, we'll continue to look at that, and I know Shannon and Kelly have looked into that as far as what that looks like going forward with any potential resignations or retirements. But, with that said, on the director's side in that building, I think one of the things that we don't necessarily remember is what licensures are required right now to get a replacement for anyone in there. You need certain things for, to be a director of curriculum or pupil services and special education, and the numbers are very small that apply to begin with. If we want to make that more difficult, we could combine those. It's kind of like combining the decision the board made, which was a difficult one, which was to make a director of business services, instead of having a director focused on human resources and one on finance. And when we did have that, we did have multiple administrative assistants and another one for payroll. So, I don't think, I, I don't fully remember what the whole staff looked like there, but I know adjustments had been made with, with this in mind and future reductions. And certainly, to everyone's point, when we are out in, in the public, be it at the grocery store, quick trip, wherever that is, or even in the halls, you know, some additional knowledge on the talking points is what I'm hearing from fellow board members. It's not necessarily that it's not fully understood. Some of the things that do come up is anticipation of retirements and resignations and, and we, we sometimes hear that, not until the meeting or not until the decision night. And, but that goes back to other points where this is taken into consideration for the two months' worth of work versus the seven days of, of opportunity to see it before a meeting. And what does that look like before we're making a motion and making a decision? So, those, those were the couple of things I just wanted to add, and things we'll continue to look at to improve a process that certainly is different this year, but it's not perfect. So, open the floor again for additional discussion or questions.
Brett? I've got a comment. I guess, if we're going to talk about process, I kind of, let's lay the process out. We got the information that was presented at a committee meeting, which was known about prior, I believe, two weeks, maybe three, that it was coming at that committee meeting. There wasn't any discussion that was intended to be had there, just a preliminary, this is when it's coming about. Please all attend that can. If not, you will get an email document of it later that evening. Questions can be asked, and I believe they were answered very promptly in a Google Doc. The parliamentary procedure that this board and everyone agrees to operate on is Robert's Rules, which is motions, discussions, and voting. I feel if there was more discussion to be had from our previous meeting, it could have been had that night. If no one, if an individual member or a collective group of members didn't feel comfortable at that meeting with the discussion that was had, or what was laid out on the list, et cetera, they can vote no. And if the majority of the vote, board votes no, the motion doesn't pass, and we continue the process. So, if we want to complain about process and emphasize process, we also have to respect the process that we govern our body on, is voting and discussion. Motion then discussion, not discussion then motion then discussion then voting. It's vote on a motion, make a motion, discuss the motion, vote on the motion. If the majority votes no, it's dead, and the process can change and continue. But, I guess I'm not entirely understanding what the outcome of tonight is supposed to be. It is, I'm, I understand the points that have been brought up, I totally get that. I guess I'm just curious what the collective outcome of this is supposed to be.
And to answer that, I guess, Brett, ultimately, there was things left unasked, unanswered, a feeling that maybe every stone wasn't left or was left unturned, and we were looking to have some additional dialogue. No offense to Kendra, it wasn't just to include you, but it's certainly nice to have your, your insight and reflection on it, because every one of us has a unique view, and we bring something different to the table, so that's always appreciated. But, I think what I was hearing was, we have a short window of opportunity to get this right, and a lot hinges around the end of this month. Let's, let's get together, ask any final questions, even if it's just discussion and informational only tonight, let's clear the air, let's set the table and make sure we do this right going forward. And in fact, when I put this agenda together with the help of Mr. Murray, I did not foresee necessarily any action taken. I think it was a lot of questions to be answered, if there was additional follow-up, have some direction. So, in the next two weeks, we're able to say, to the point of other board members who said it, and it bears repeating, is that we can explain the decision and where we came from, and not just trusting somebody else that did the work. So, this is us additionally doing the work. But, I get your point, and I understand that as well. So, I'm, everyone has been here, does budgets differently and understands budgets differently. So, some, some people certainly, myself included, depending the topic, take longer than five to seven days to absorb data. So, Jaclyn?
I guess I feel like this feels like when you call it a complaint, why I feel like discussion's stifled in board meetings, because I can feel like, ooh, maybe I shouldn't be asking this, or I should have emailed it, but I didn't think about it till just now. Or, Linda said something, and it, yeah, that's a really good point, and I have something to add to that. So, I feel like, I don't know what, what the outcome or the, anything other than like, let's talk about our process, how do we operate? And I think it's really interesting, like, Paul makes a point that it's Shannon Murray's, and this is a one-man show, and we should sort of be agreeing to that. And I respect that comment, because I do agree Shannon's our leader, and he's the expert, along with Dr. Strike. And I do trust those things. And so far, my experience in these meetings and on this board, they haven't steered us wrong. Their recommendations, their proposals, their presentations have been right on. But, I do feel like the process on this board is disjointed. It's some people's opinions and discussion points are stifled, and I do feel like we miss out on a lot of really good work people aren't sharing or understanding, and that translates to our community. And I feel like for me, when I think about the last meeting, as a representative of those people and engaging with them, I could see that we, we don't look pulled together, we don't have all of our answers, there's some contention. And I feel like we need to be doing better at that.
Thank you. Maria?
I 100% agree with you, and thank you for articulating it so well. I think that was one of the problems at the last meeting. I think that there were people who felt stifled and, and didn't want to say anything. So, I think it was important to come back together tonight and at least kind of air it out, talk it through. There's no one board member that is more important than another. And we should all feel free to freely discuss this without being talked down to or feeling like people want to leave the meeting and that a question might be stupid. Nobody should feel like that. Everybody should feel like they can discuss this, ask the questions they have. We all have different backgrounds. Finance is not my strong suit, so I will ask more questions with the finance stuff. So, and, and you're smarter with that. You totally are. So, you know, I just, I, I'm only on this board for another two months, so I'm not going to be making a big impact on this board. But, I think that going forward, it's just a good idea for everybody to be able to say what they want, ask what they want, not say what they want, but ask the questions that they need to make an informed decision. And, and, and this is huge. This is the biggest issue I've seen in the seven years I've been on the board. So, it's, it takes extra time to, to really get down and make sure that I can sleep at night with the decisions that I made in my one-of-nine vote.
All right. Chad?
Just, I got two things, just to, seeing Paul brought up NTC, they don't have to go to referendum. If I looked right at my taxes, their taxes went up this year. There's a big difference when you're asking the public for more money than when you don't have to. It'd be nice if we could just jack it up. On the other end, and then, you know, I agree with the process. I, it's not that I don't disagree, I just, but if we want to really go by discuss, by the process, the potential budget was never a motion to bring to the full board. So, we should have never had the discussion, if you look at the notes and the minutes. So we should have never had the discussion, if you look at the notes and the minutes. So that, I mean, we didn't even follow, to get it here, we didn't follow the official rules. That's all I got.
Kevin, may I?
Go ahead, Shannon, while I collect my thoughts.
I, I appreciate everybody's comments on the process and, um, the feedback on that is good. Well, I would challenge the board on a, not for tonight necessarily, but, uh, if there is that missing step of board input or whatever that looks like, um, I, I would love, love to hear a recommendation on that going forward for next year, next time we do this because, um, you know, for some of us that have been around a long time, um, if those questions are first sprung at the board meeting, that's very awkward for board members and administrators. Um, it's, it puts me in a position where I potentially have got to tell you why your idea is bad, as an example, or, you know, however that goes. And so whatever that process is, if we're missing that step, I support that. I'm comfortable with doing that. Uh, we would have to kind of build into the time for that. Um, but I think that just needs to be defined moving forward so that we, uh, so we know what that is.
If I could add one thing, and I think you could find it in our notes, it was requested at an HR finance meeting, that we no longer, that the budget decisions go directly to the board and not to the committee members only. So that's partly why you saw a topic summary different than you've ever seen before. And in fact, after the meeting, Shannon and I looked at the, the policies that indicated that, a full budget. So I feel like this, the, the, I agree it was a little bit awkward, but that was the discussion at an HR finance meeting was to go to full board with that. But I think to, I think Brett mentioned this earlier, to the point that we said this is so huge to get information sooner, we'll have it as informational only on the committee, invite everyone and seven of you came. Um, and I would invite, just like Shannon said, any process, but I, to explain that that's why we said no action taken at committee and it'll be a full board discussion because that was a request. Um, but granted, maybe that's different because that's not how you do other committee structures as well. But I think that, that was discussed at an HR finance and there was the decision made to get information sooner, invite everyone and try to get that. Whether that's what you want to do moving forward or not, I think is up to you, but I think that was, that's why we did that.
Thank you, Kelly. Ron, go ahead.
One question for Dr. Strike. The budget's not complete, correct?
Correct. Very good point. That's, that's when we said the budget. We're, we're doing a projection. I talked the difference of a projection versus a budget and doing reductions on that.
We have not voted on the budget.
Yep, yep. You are right. You are absolutely right and you won't until October. Yep. No, very good point. So, but that, that idea of those big budget cut decisions, the request was it should be full board, um, and so I think we just have to figure that out. And I fully support how we get information, whatever process you want to take, but I think that we had that little bit of, I don't know if you want to call it awkwardness among all of us and how you wanted to approach that at a committee or board level or how to, how to handle that, so.
But part of it has to be done like now because of layoffs.
So I think it's the time, the staffing timelines, yes. The stat, there are statute and timelines with certain groups of staff that some of those reductions in regard to staffing have to be made a little bit sooner than when you pass a budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And you pass a budget four months into the fiscal year, which is unusual too, but that's what we do.
Kevin, could I piggyback on that, on Ron's comment?
Go ahead, Shannon.
And Kelly, for that matter. Um, so one of the challenges that we have is we're discovering tonight is that we are creating budget reductions based on, uh, crystal ball-ish kind of, uh, actions by the state that we will formally address in October. And so any discussion we have about a deficit budget, deficit spend, um, that won't actually become formalized until October. However, we kind of have to know what the, what the temper of the board is making decisions moving forward on those kind of things as well, because those impact the things that will happen at the end of this month. And so, you know, you look, you take a step back on the whole process and I'm just talking, not talking about MAPS, I'm talking about the state of Wisconsin. This is, this is challenging, convoluted stuff, but here we are. And so, um, um, I guess my point is when we talk about setting the budget, Ron, that is an October thing, but there are some things that we need to know, particularly when it comes to deficit spending or deficit budgeting, uh, well in advance of that, because we won't, we won't make, take formal action on that until, until fall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Additional discussion or, or clarifying questions? Go ahead, Linda.
So some of these items that we voted on at the last board meeting maybe won't take effect or may not happen until October then and changes still could be made or, um, these are all going to be taking place at the end of March here? Was the, I guess...
I can address that, Kevin. These, uh, Linda, these will all be taken care of, addressed, uh, certainly the staff side of it. Uh, I statute mid-April for teachers, a little bit later for support staff, but all of these changes, whether they're blues or cans or whatever was approved, will go into effect and start impacting students in fall.
Okay. So if, um, so if we feel that maybe there is some things that could be changed in these reductions, we still could maybe make those changes before the April timeframe? Right? Am I misunderstanding that? If we feel that there was just, I mean, not saying there was, but if we feel that maybe we overlooked something or, um, some of these things weren't the right move per se, you could come back to us in April beforehand and no, couldn't make those changes? I'm sorry.
No, I would say, I would say it has to be by March.
By the end of March. Okay. Thank you.
Kevin, one more.
Ron, go ahead.
There's always the option of hiring people back. I mean, if we, if we, if the state goes nuts with their budget and gives us a trillion dollars, we can always hire everybody back. I mean, it's, it's not that once they're gone, they're gone deal, we can look at it and say, hey, we got the money, let's get these people back because we need them. So that's always an option.
Can I just say another thing?
Go ahead, Linda.
The thing is, is once they're gone, they're gone, they're not going to come back.
Never know.
They're going to go somewhere else where there, there's maybe stability or things like that. They're not going to want to come back to a place that said, sorry, see you later, but we'll take you back because we have the money now. Uh, I mean, people's lives don't work that way. Unfortunately, mine wouldn't. I mean, nobody on this board, if you lost your job, the option is you have to go find something else to be able to support your family.
And that's fine. You can, you can hire somebody else then. You can always refill the position.
But then we also have...
Not necessarily with the person laid off.
Let, let Linda finish, please, Ron. Thank you.
Which, thank you. Um, which, if we do that and, you know, quite a few of these are teaching positions and with what Ms. Strike said earlier, we have a teacher shortage. And so there's a teacher shortage and if, you know, these positions are let go, dropped, but we want to add them again, we're going to have a heck of a time trying to replace those. Especially the way it sounds, teacher shortages is all over the place. But, um, that's just my two cents. I'm just saying, you know, if we let somebody go, they're not going to hang around to say, oh, yep, you can have your job back. They're going to jump ship and go find a place that's going to take them. Um, and, you know, that's just what they have to do to support their family and make a living, but, um, I, I don't know, this just really stinks, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Ron, did you want to follow up?
Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
Sorry. But no, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess, I guess to your, to your point and to everyone's point, everyone has a, a different situation to make that decision. If you're, what your age is, what your marital status, what your ties to the community are. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different reasons that even when we have a quality budget, that someone leaves our district to find another one, perhaps close to family or a, a better opportunity for someone within their family. So yeah, that, that's very factual, what you're saying. However, it, there's a lot of unknowns there and I will not know that until that happens, so. Kendra?
I have a question. Um, okay, so Dr. Strike, you talked about 12 people, but if I'm correct that some of, I could be wrong, so keep me in, keep me in check. Um, some of this is due to attrition, some of it is retirement, but are there some people that the position may be going away, but there's opportunity for them to be in a pool and apply for a different role? Okay. So like, I, 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 um, it's a sensitive topic and it's a public school, which is hard and I don't think any of us have faced two failed referendums back to back. And so for me, um, I can only speak for myself, that's probably the hardest thing, but I, I don't do the day-to-day and so I do trust what you guys have laid out here from a budgetary standpoint, because I don't know all of that. While I've gone to the schools and I interact and I see the kids and I, I can, as a mom, manifest all the potential negative aspects, impacts of it. I, I know that you worked hard with all of the administration. I, I know the principals were included. I know that that was hard for all of them to probably look at this. Um, these are positions right now and that's the one thing I guess I just really wanted to, they're not people as of right now. This is just positions. Okay.
I think the other thing to know is, um, kind of to the point, just, um, the administrators to non-renew the deadline was February 1st. That's why we did what we did in January. For teachers, there's a preliminary notice and then there's a final notice. The final notice is actually May 15th and you have to kind of backtrack from there and you have to give enough window for a hearing, et cetera. So you could by mid-April, but we've said from the get-go, by the end of March to kind of make those decisions. Part of that, I would say as staff will say that too, just let, if it's going to be me, just let me know so I can think about things. So not that we want to speed it up, but we've always kind of said the end of March. We have a special board meeting at the end of, I believe it's March 29th or March 30th. We're tentatively set, that's when you would do preliminary notices for teachers. Support staff, we will wait until May, um, or in, in that ballpark. We usually give reasonable assurance letters in May, saying that you have a job when you come back, so that would be the time that we'd kind of make support staff decisions because there's nothing in statute for support staff, uh, but that gives more time for things that may happen. So, um, I think to Ron's point, when we have a preliminary, preliminary notice, I will personally be there, but, and I'm sure principals will too, we will explain this as preliminary. This doesn't mean, because we may find out between now and May 15th or whatever we have to do, that if we have information that we can say, we're not going to give you a final notice. You know what I mean? So there, there is, I don't want to say, they'll still, to Linda's point, may have to make a personal decision, but that, I just want you to understand the preliminary and that's what would come to you in March. That's when you're going to get the people, to your point. Um, Kevin had shared that if there's an opportunity, kind of share those timelines with you tonight just to make sure everyone kind of knows what that, what that means, so.
Yeah, and I, and I respect the time that principals have taken it, because I know it's not easy for anyone. This is not, and so the time that they've taken in to, you know, understand what the needs of their school is and then have that filter up to you and Mr. Murray to, you know, have that conversation. I, I trust, and I know that that took place. Um, for me, again, I haven't been at any meetings in February, so I can't, I, sorry. Um, but like for me, I think just some insight of like, I trust that all of that had happened, but if I were to have been there to presently vote, I feel like I would have been like, okay, can I just know like, okay, this is the negative impact that I'm seeing in this column, but like what else is there, knowing that the weight falls on everybody else to like help support the students or the district? You know, that would have been maybe my question at that time, but, um, I know it's not easy and I know that there's been a lot of time and hours put into it, so that's, that's all.
Thank you, Kendra. Additional discussion or questions? Anything else on this topic for the good of the order this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Maria. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at 6:34 PM signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you.